This is February 21st, 2019. Meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals opened a meeting. And our first order of business is to deal with something we've already approved that needs to be redone, apparently. So I'm going to make a motion. This is on...
It's application 18Z007.
Thank you. Property is 1280 Creek Street. And I'm going to move that this is a Type 2 action under Seeker, an issue of negative declaration. No impact, bad versus right.
A second.
Was it a Type 2 action or was it an unlisted? I don't remember.
Unlisted.
Yeah. It was unlisted, but you still... Then it would be unlisted, but you're making a motion for a negative declaration. So, okay.
So I put Type 2 on the...
No, no, it's not a Type 2.
No, I'm listing it as a Type 2.
If it was a Type 2 action, you wouldn't need to do Seeker.
Right. Okay. So that's my motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. As far as the motion itself, I would again move to approve it. You want me to go through the...
No, because all those are...
Yeah, they're already here.
Refer to what's in the draft resolution for both the... There's a conditional use permit, I believe, in an area variance. I think you have my copy.
Yeah, I think there's a few variances. Three.
Additional use permit.
Less setback and then...
Creative building, yeah. Last call for it. So I would move to approve all four of those. I'll do them all at once and for the reasons given in the proposed resolution.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve and second any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry it.
Can you include Dana in this?
We just did the Kitopia one.
Yeah, no. It was 3-0, so I would put you in as well.
3-0.
It passed.
3-0.
I'll see if it's up now.
Do you want the Internet?
No, it is not... No, he's not synced up.
It took forever last night.
It took forever, yeah. I did this morning.
At least two hours, I would say, before it came.
There you go.
It took half an hour for me.
No, it was...
Now, I'd curious, can you work on that? I had to request access and do a bunch of stuff, but we got in. I got in.
How's that different?
It's a Google Doc. It's not PDF.
Do you want to go by or go through the applications here tonight?
Yeah. Mike, thanks for covering for me. I apologize for being late. So we took care of Kitopia and we didn't have anything tabled. So, yeah, why don't we go through tonight's applications to see if there's any clarifications that we need. Anything on A or 1 listed on the agenda as A?
There was a mention of a map in the application.
Can we do the... I'm sorry, the January meeting minutes?
Minutes? Sure we can. What are you doing, Mike? You're going right into the application. All right. January meeting minutes. Everyone's had them. We have a motion to approve or if there's any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Any further discussion?
That's your...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second?
Marie.
Do you use this? Yeah.
Okay. Can you type and talk, Mike? Simultaneously?
On occasion.
You were saying about a map?
Yeah, I had the same note. There was no map in that.
Yeah. It talks about location of all the new shed on a map. I don't have any map. So is there a map in the application?
There's obviously the photo, but that's not... You're looking for a survey or...
This survey map?
Yes.
Okay. That's right.
I'm just going through the electronic version here. I don't...
Also showing the existing versus the new that are overlapping over it.
Are you lead on that?
Yes.
All right. You want to hold on to that one or if you need a copy? So anything else other than...
No, not really.
Yeah. Okay. So let's see then. Brauncroft Boulevard, Advantage Credit Union.
I just, I guess, had a question to Andy. Did they not give you enough information first for you to make a determination if they didn't need a permit or didn't that happen?
I think there was some miscommunication. They installed the sign without getting a sign permit. I think they were under the impression that it was just a maintenance and didn't require a permit, but because they changed the copy...
They were under that impression or they gave you that impression?
I think they were under the impression they didn't need a permit to change the copy.
And you thought they were just doing maintenance?
I... Yes, I thought they were replacing like with like and in that case they wouldn't require a permit.
Okay.
So that's what I wanted to clarify.
All right. Anything else on that one? Three in a row. The gas stations, the first two, I think are relatively speaking, simple change of ownerships. Is that fair to say, would you say, Andy?
Yep.
The third one, while it's the same thing because it's... You had some mention about treating it as a pre-existing, non-conforming, but really the same sort of questions and issues that would arise. So I may suggest that we take all of these at once. Does anybody have a problem with that if we just have the person run through it? Because as I said, I think the questions would be the same. Speedy... I don't even know how to say it. California.
Speedylicious.
Speedylicious. Any questions on that one? All right. And Harris Road?
Just a couple notes that the first variance you're looking for is wasn't pre-existing, so we're scratching the first and we're just looking for a side setback. And then I also noticed the fact that the application only talks about the setback to the south, but there's probably also one for the north as well since the building is 37 feet from one side and 20 feet from the other. That's proposed for the pole barn or 50 foot's needed on both. So we'll actually have to address both of those, north and south.
Okay. What about the beginning? Further information on the...
I talked to the engineer that's representing the applicant and informed them of the building size concern. And I believe they're going to adjust the size so that it's not larger than the residence.
And it's just larger than? It's not a percentage of it? It just cannot be larger?
Cannot be larger.
Okay. Well, we'll just put that on the record. Everybody know what that is? Okay, we'll just make sure that's on the record tonight that they commit to doing that. And we're going to end up tabling this, you think, pending further review or no? It's not...
If they commit, then it's going to be less than the size of the main structure, I think. Condition it. If you approve it.
All right. Okay. Anything else on the agenda to handle now? All right. We got about 15 minutes. We'll take... End the work session and we will reconvene for the public hearings at 7 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is going to take place in two parts. Part one will be our public hearings. We'll ask the applicant to come up to that podium there and give us name and address and then explain to the board members why the relief being requested should be granted. After the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will most likely have some questions and then we'll ask anyone in the audience that cares to speak about the application to come up and do the same thing, give us name and address and then talk about the application. After the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and we'll meet in the back of the room to deliberate on tonight's applications and take care of any other business that the board may have. Members of the public are certainly welcome at both sessions, the public hearings and the deliberations, although typically deliberations are times reserved for conversations amongst board members, board members with staff and occasionally with counsel. Tonight's agenda is medium size, I guess I'd say, but we should move through it. And as I said, you're welcome to stay if for whatever reason you cannot or would do not want to. You can certainly call tomorrow, excuse me, and find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. Each and every month, we like to point out that we think the town does a very good job of making sure that people that in the community, especially those that live near the site that is a subject of an application, that those folks are notified of their right to come in and talk about the application. The town does that by sending postcards to people that live within a certain number of feet of the property, by making the applicant post sign out on the property, by posting the agenda on the website and posting the agendas here in the town hall as well. We certainly welcome everybody's opinion. That makes our job, we think, easier and that's the way it's supposed to work. So we appreciate everybody's comments. And that being said, I ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. And Andy, may we have the first application, please?
Robert HK263 Parkview Drive, Rochester, New York 14625. Request an area variance to allow a larger storage building than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code at 263 Parkview Drive. The property is owned by Robert and Faith K. and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 108.14-1-42, application number 19Z-0002.
Okay. Good evening. As you said, my name is Bob K. and I live at 263 Parkview Drive and I'm applying for an area variance. I currently have an 8 by 10-foot shed on my property. I'd like to replace it with a 12 by 24-foot shed. The new shed will be used to store a very infrequently used summer car, garden tools, materials, snow blow, things like that. Currently, the car is in my attached garage, which means my wife can't park her car in the garage. So if I put the car in the new shed, then she can use the garage and get it out of the elements in the winter. Also, if I were to store my car elsewhere, it would be costly and it would be very inconvenient to actually use it. My plans for the new shed are it'll comply with all setback requirements. I don't have any issues with that. Going to side it to match my house, same garage doors I currently have on my house and put in a couple of windows just to enhance the looks of it. In my application that you have in front of you, you'll see letters from three of my surrounding neighbors in support of what I wish to do. And that's it.
Is this going to be attached to the ground? Is it going to be on footers or...
It won't be big enough or high enough to need footers, but I'll have a concrete pad.
Okay, that it's going to sit on?
Yes.
And it'll be attached to that?
And attached to that.
What about driveway? Anything in front of there that you're going to extend?
I really was not planning on that. Again, it's an infrequently used car. It doesn't... It only goes out when the weather's good, so I don't see a need for a driveway.
Is there any other similar structures alongside a house in that neighborhood?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Have you thought about the possibility of expanding the garage instead of just putting a shed in?
I did and I got two quotes on doing that. One quote, a ballpark was in the order of something like $35,000 and the other was about over $40,000. And also, I actually think this would look better because the expanding the garage would make it so big, it would make the house look small by comparison.
Okay. Any exterior lighting going to be added to this shed?
I wasn't planning on it. I may at a later date, but I'm not really planning on it.
And is this the smallest shed that you could use to get a car in there?
It really is. I think they recommend 12 by 24 is a minimum recommendation for a car.
How high will this shed be at the highest point approximately?
I know the soffits will be about nine and a half feet, so I'm not sure what the peak of the roof will be. Maybe three more.
Okay. Okay. And it's going to match the color and the materials in the house?
Yes. It's currently mastic siding, like a slate gray, and I would... I got the same siding a couple of years ago. I assume I can still get it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
You said it was going to be $35,000 to $40,000 to expand the garage. How much just for the shed was the difference in the price?
Five or seven tops. I haven't really expected out yet. I thought I'd wait to see what happened here, but it can't be more than five or seven.
Is there a reason you can't use this? You can't put the shed in the back of the house?
You wouldn't be able to get to it. You wouldn't be able, you know, drive a car in or out and it would then affect the view from the back of the house. We have a lot of trees and everything back there. I don't know if you noticed that, when you...
I did. Thank you.
Do you know if that if you were to expand the garage, forget about cost for a minute, which way would you go? What direction?
It would be...
Would it be toward 267, your neighbor at 267?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just looking at the map here and I'm wondering if an appropriate expansion of the garage would require any variances. It's hard to tell from this.
I would be within... I'd still be within the setback requirement.
Even with an expansion?
If I were to expand, yeah.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? Okay, come on up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Peters. I live in 262 Parkview Drive, right across the street from Bob. And he's done everything right as far as I'm concerned in this project. He's talked to all the neighbors. He's explained the options he had in terms of putting the shed up. He has a very fantastic show car, that that's what he's going to house in the garage. I also have a show car and the neighbor next to Bob, right next door, also has a show car. So the three of us, at least, are the most concerned. We're very supportive and in fact, there's a shed on there now and it's almost a different color than from the house. And so what Bob plans to do in terms of melding it to the house, making it look good, I think it's going to be great. His property is immaculate and I think the neighborhood is very, very supportive of it. So we hope the board votes yes.
Thank you.
I had one other question, not for him, but from the applicant. Or is he?
Why don't you come on back up? We need to make sure the mic can pick you up.
Sure.
The way you showed it on the instrument survey map, the garage is going to be in line with the front of the house?
Yes.
The shed's going to be in line with the front of the garage?
Yes.
Is the current shed in line with the front or is it setback further?
I think it's... It might be setback.
Looks very setback.
Very slightly. Yeah, it's... Yeah, it's setback a few feet.
Okay. And the space between the side of the garage and the side of the shed is going to stay about the same?
It would be less. I think it's going to be five or six feet by the time I'm done.
Okay. So it's going to be less than the...
Than the current.
Yeah.
But that'll enable me to stay away from the lot line by 10 feet like I need to.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Thank you very much.
David Samuelson, Advantage Federal Credit Union, 70 Metro Park, Rochester, New York 14623, and Calvary Chapel of Rochester Incorporated, 2505 Brauncroft Boulevard, Rochester, New York 14625. Request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow the replacement of a previously approved existing freestanding sign at 2515 Brauncroft Boulevard. The property is owned by Advantage Federal Credit Union and is zoned business, non-retail, SBL number 123.07-2-45, application number 19Z-0003.
Thanks for having us up today. Advantage Federal Credit Union purchased the property in 2012 and we had fulfilled our sign requirements on the building and our poll sign on our property. We had this sign, this third sign, that was pretty much a ban.
I'm sorry, did you put your name in the record? If you did, I apologize.
I'm sorry. David Samuelson. I'm a facilities director at Advantage Federal Credit Union.
Thank you.
We weren't allowed to use the sign. It would have exceeded the number of identification signs that a business could have for the town of Pennfield. So we canvassed the tenants in the plaza on several occasions, asking if there was any interest to reuse that sign for their purposes. We didn't have any response on all three occasions. Around 2017, the Calvary Chapel asked us if they could use the sign. We're like, sure, go ahead. Make sure you go to the town and get the proper permits, which we felt that... We thought they did and they thought they did. They went ahead and refurbished the sign and apparently we need to get a variance to change the appearance of the sign. We didn't really change the physical location, the size, setback, that sort of thing. So we're asking if we could just allow them to keep it the way it is because there is no interest from other tenants and we have no use for the sign and they are going to benefit from that.
The biggest issue with the sign that I can see is it's four times the size of a permitted sign in the town of Pennfield without getting a variance, which is a major increase in the area. The original purpose of allowing that sign to exist was, and I quote, "to serve to minimize the number of signs freestanding that would be on that property." It doesn't look, from the sounds of things, as the other tenants are going to want any additional signs. So I guess my question to you is, why is it needed to be that big?
Can I defer? This is Charles Sullivan from the Calvary Chapel.
I guess, John.
Good.
Your question is, why do we feel that it's needed or why do we feel that it's needed to be so big?
Yes.
Okay. So definitely a fair question. The size of the sign, as I understood it, was... Hasn't actually changed in terms of the physical dimension. So I think that the actual physical size of the, you know, the height, the width of the sign, I think, is the same. And again, it was underneath the understanding that nobody else wanted to use that sign in the plaza and that, you know, the refurbishing of a sign didn't warrant a variance. So that's why the sign is there. And it's the only sign we actually have that, you know, for the church itself out on the street. So we feel it's a good way to allow the community to understand what service signs we have as well as, you know, make known that the fact that there is a church behind that gas station in that plaza.
I mean, there's four... Three other churches that I can think of off the top on that stretch. One, Brauncroft Community. There's a Lutheran church.
Yep.
There's one further down the road. They don't have signs anywhere near that size and they're able to adequately identify their churches. So one of the things we have to look at is the proposed sign necessary to adequately identify your church?
Okay. And I'd say the only difference between a Brauncroft or a Lutheran church or faith Lutheran church, they're... I mean, they have their freestanding facility. So, I mean, if you pull into the parking lot, you're not going to get confused as to where you're going. It is the church. That's what that building is for. With Brauncroft, with Calvary Chapel, it's a little bit... It's a little bit different because it is set in a plaza and there is that former gas station that kind of sits right in the front of our building. So it's... If that sign wasn't there, it... I don't think... And people were just passing by, maybe looking for a place to fellowship in the morning, that sign, you know, if that sign wasn't there, they wouldn't be able to see, you know, our church.
Let me ask you this. Has your church grown over the last 10 years?
Has our church grown over the last 10 years?
You mean membership?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't keep an active membership. We haven't necessarily had a downturn in terms of the services. We've always kept our services as Thursday morning... Or Thursday evening, sorry. Sunday morning and Sunday evening. But to be honest, yeah, I mean, I think that the membership, even though we don't take an active role of membership, it has decreased.
Okay. And up to this point, when you did this sign, you didn't need a sign out there? You weren't having a problem with people identifying where your church was, were you?
Yeah, I don't think... I guess I could answer it to say, I don't think that anybody's come into the church and said, oh, I'm so thankful that your sign's there. So I can't say that there's been any, like, positive, you know, confirmation that the sign brought the person in. But with the downturn of the membership and the fact that I think, despite the size, I think the sign is definitely... Looks a lot better to the eye. Again, despite the size of everything, I think we're doing... And we weren't trying to do anything that was unethical by any...
No, no. Nobody's saying that you are. It's... I guess the question is just because the sign is there, it was there for a reason which no longer exists. So, you know, to say that it looks better than what was there before is sort of irrelevant, in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. Will this sign be lit? Is it lit?
It's not.
All right. Do you have plans to illuminate it?
No.
Okay. And you want it to exist just the way it is?
We would love for it to exist just the way it is. It's a pretty big investment for the church.
I got another question for Mr. Samuelson. When's the last time you actually polled the tenants and asked if somebody wanted to add?
I believe Jeffrey Breed did in 2016 or 17.
And that was before they made the changes to the sign?
Correct.
Okay.
Jeffrey Breed was the previous pastor before Dave Barbero, who's the current pastor.
And nobody said anything about adding their name to the sign, the other tenants?
Not a word. Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
So were any of the three of you around when the prior resolution of approval was granted in 1991?
No. We...
And when I say around, I mean involved.
Around, but not.
Okay. But have you read it? Have you... And under... Well, have you read it?
I have not.
Okay. I see it's here on the papers that are submitted before us and I've been on the board a long time, but I was not on the board in 1991. But from my reading, the approval resolution, it seems to me to be clear that the members that approved it then were approving it based upon the representations and expectations of the people involved then, that there were going to be many tenants represented on a on a size that large. And that was, again, it seems to me, the justification for approving a sign that big back then. And it's, if you haven't read it, I'm not going to ask you if you agree with that because it's not fair because you haven't seen it. But, um, I guess, uh, if we were to assume that to be true, that a sign that large was approved because four or five tenants, by the way, how many tenants are there that occupy both of those places combined now? Five, six at, at least, right?
Probably more than that. There's, there's some small office places in there-
Yeah.
-they wouldn't want to advertise. They're just, um, probably like a, there's an insurance comp, an insurance agent, but they're-
Well, and if they haven't said they want to be on the sign, then that-
Yeah.
-that sort of answers the question. But then it leads to another question is, logically, do we need a sign that big? Back in 91, the board thought so, based upon, as I've said, what seems to me to be clear, that there were going to be a bunch of tenants on there. And that either happened and then stopped happening, but it, it's not happening now. And I understand, and we can get into a little bit about the effort and the expense to which the church has gone to put it up. Um, and it's unfortunate that there wasn't a discussion ahead of that. Um, but given the fact that you don't have any other tenants that want to be on it, it's a dilemma for this board to say, okay, well, the need for a sign that big doesn't appear to exist, uh, should we still allow it? And that's where we're sitting. I don't want to hog the time here, but, um, I just wanted to know if you had seen it and you had any comments on the prior approval.
And, and I just, real quick, I, I do understand-
Doesn't have to be real quick.
Okay. I, I do understand it's a dilemma. I think, I think we, we did call, and we did talk to somebody on the board that said that you didn't need a permit to refurbish the sign.
Okay.
So I, I don't think we would have advanced if we didn't have the thumbs up from a member of the board. Um, that we, we just, that's not something we would have done, so.
All right. Okay. Well, and, uh, all right. Okay. Um, anything else from, uh, any other-
What, what, would there be any issue, if there was a condition placed, that in the future, if there's a, if there's tenants that come in that want to use that sign, that we're not going to grant more signs for that parcel, uh, or for either of those two parcels that are supposed to be represented by that sign, that that's up to the property to say, we're going to remedy this by, you know, either fixing the sign or correcting it, or, or making it smaller to accommodate additional tenants?
That would be a discussion between us and the-
Correct.
-the chapel. Um, I'm not opposed to that. That was our original intent back in 2012, was to get full participation, be a good neighbor, and, um, it didn't happen. So to, to answer that question, yes. I, I would certainly entertain that.
But I think, sorry, I think we would almost have to have them apply for some type of approval because that could change the whole design of how that is, that sign is, if we were allowed that to happen.
Say that again? I'm not-
I think to just say that they could inter, you know, do an internal administrative thing and add a tenant to the sign wouldn't work because it would, might change the whole design of what it looks like.
If that were to happen, trust me, I would come to you and apply the property, make sure that happened properly. We wouldn't just change it again.
So you wouldn't have a problem with that as a condition?
I would not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, because I think the one thing we wouldn't want to see is another tenant come in and ask for another free, you know, a monument sign out fronts just down the street from that to represent their space. Because I think that would be a, pretty much guaranteed no, since that sign was set up for that.
Yeah. We understand that, and I think that would be a fair compromise. It would allow us to keep the freestanding sign as, as it is, not to have that investment, investment be lost. And then if a tenant does come to the board saying, we want a sign, we would, you know, probably be willing to at least, uh, you know, negotiate that, talk to, talk to the bank and-
You also own the gas station portion too, correct?
We do not.
You do not? That's a separate parcel?
I think that's owned by Exxon.
We own up to the, I don't know if you're highly familiar with the area. There's a phone booth, and there's a, uh, a little roadway in between, and we own halfway through that.
So how far is the, the side lot from the sign, that parcel? Isn't it pretty close to, to where that gas station is?
I believe about eight feet.
Eight feet from the boundary?
Yes. I'd have to really look at that. I don't, I don't have that committed.
Okay. Um, so, not to keep harping on this, but, um, do you know if, well, if either, if anybody there was aware of this 1991 resolution prior to putting up the new sign?
No.
No? Okay.
We pretty much thought it was an abandoned sign. We were considering tearing it down. We hadn't tear, torn it down because we know if, once we take it down, probably never get it back, or be a challenge to get it back. So we just left it there.
Okay.
Weren't really sure what we were going to do with it.
Well, all right. Um, how much, how much money did it cost to put up the sign that's up there now?
That was at least $6,000.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, actually, just, I want to ask Andy, I, I'm sorry, did I, was my recitation of the 91 resolution, is that, in your opinion, a fair recitation of the intent as evidenced by the language of that approval?
Yes, that's my understanding, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right.
Do you want me to read the next three, being that it's the same applicant?
Yeah, I, my, we have three consecu, now, three consecutive applications by the same applicant, in essence, to allow continued operation of gas stations in various locations in town. And because I think a lot of the issues are going to be similar, they won't be exact because they are different locations, but they're going to be similar. So my thought is, we'll have the applicant give all three presentations, uh, ask questions, invite people in the audience to come up and speak about, um, any of the three that they wish. So that is going to begin with Andy having to read all three applications in a row, and so feel free to take whatever kind of break your knee while he does that.
Okay. Uh, John Shiraba, Lantech, 710 Ladder Road, Rochester, New York, 14612. On behalf of PEM LLC, 2697 Lakeville Road, Avon, New York, 14414, request a conditional use permit under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.7-C2 of the code to allow the continued operation of an existing gasoline service station convenience store by a new operator at 1617 Penfield Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Marathon Petroleum Company LP and its own general business. SBL number 138.08-1-2.2, application number 19Z-0004. And the next one, John Shiraba, Lantech, 710 Ladder Road, Rochester, New York, 14612. On behalf of 2175 Penfield Road LLC, PEM LLC, 2697 Lakeville Road, Avon, New York, 14414, request a conditional use permit under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.7-C2 of the code to allow the continued operation of an existing gasoline service station convenience store by a new operator at 2175 Penfield Road. The property is owned by 2175 Penfield Road LLC and is owned general business. SBL number 139.02-1-4, application number 19Z-0005. John Shiraba, Lantech, 710 Ladder Road, Rochester, New York, 14612. On behalf of 3304 Atlantic Avenue LLC, PEM LLC, 2697 Lakeville Road, Avon, New York, 14414, request approval under section 250-7.13 of the code to allow the continuation of an existing gasoline service station convenience store by a new operator at 3290 Atlantic Avenue. The property is now or firmly owned by 3290 Atlantic Avenue LLC and is owned mixed-use development. SBL number 110.03-1-22, application number 19Z-0007.
Good evening. I am John Shiraba with Lantech, uh, representing PEM this evening. Uh, also with me is Ken Pirelli, who is vice president of PEM. And PEM is a name you probably, I'm not aware of, but you might be aware of, uh, the company that they operate, which is called QuickLease. It's a convenience store. Uh, they currently operate, uh, over 18 stores, uh, throughout New York. Uh, the closest ones we have right now, there's one in Webster, there's one in Fairport, uh, in Greece. Uh, majority of them are further south in Livingston County. Um, they are a local firm. They are, their, their headquarters is in Avon, and they're very excited about coming to Penfield and operating new stores, um, in the town of Penfield. Uh, the first two stores, um, both on Penfield Road are really just a replacement that once was there. The one, uh, in the Tops Plaza, the former Hus station, is just going to be, uh, operated as a convenience store and gas station similar to the, the past. Uh, the other one on Penfield Road at 441 is currently operating. Uh, it has been sold, and, and they are operating there now, uh, and that is going to stay essentially the same. Um, they are going to, um, operate it the way they want to, not the way it was in the past. Uh, the other store on the corner of 40, 441 and 250, uh, was a former service, it's currently a service station. Uh, it's a car sales place. It's got a lot going on, a shed sales place. Uh, they, they are, uh, buying that property, and they're also acquiring the five acres behind. So we're kind of getting closer to the code by getting rid of the car service, the car sales, and the farm stand, and going to operate as, as a convenience store and gas sales, uh, facility. Uh, but in the future, we have bigger plans for that corner, so it's going to look quite different in the years to come. Uh, hopefully we'll, hopefully we may come back and see you related to more aspects of that project. But essentially what we're doing is, is, uh, is the public notice states, we're, we're just converting to a, to a convenience stores, uh, under, uh, the QuickLease logo, and operating, uh, the same hours of operation and as they currently do. So that's a brief overview of what we're doing, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Do you have any, uh, maps or drawings you can put up there, or?
I did not bring any-
Okay. No, that's, that's all right. So let's talk about panorama first. Uh, what is, what's, and I'm there frequently, but just so everybody knows, what's happening there right now as we speak? Not as we speak, but-
Well, currently it's vacant, and maybe I can come up and speak to it. We're really not proposing any major changes. We're not proposing any expansion. Uh, you'll probably see a different, uh, gas provider, uh, that was there. Um, they are going to add their signage, uh, package, uh, which we intend to meet code at this time. Uh, they're going to sell, uh, convenience project, uh, products, you know, pop, cigarettes, beer, things like that.
The, the area that's there now for, if you want to come up and, um, for sales, is not all that large, is it?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there are a lot larger gas station, uh, convenience store locations throughout this town in, in January. I just, um, it's, it's not all that, that big, so it's-
Yeah, roughly that station is probably about seven to 800 square feet.
Okay.
The, the actual building, um, excluding the canopy. Um, and actually-
And I'm sorry, can we get your name too?
Sure.
Yeah.
My name's Ken Pirelli, vice president of PEM LLC.
Thanks.
Um, and at this time, we are not looking to make any alterations to the building footprint. You know, we may reface it, paint it, you know, in, in basic improvements, redo flooring, add new, you know, countertops and gondolas inside, but very small, you know, all more decorative modifications, not anything to the actual structure of the building.
Okay. And do you know the hours that you'll be operating?
Our typical, um, hours of operation are 5 to 11 during the weekdays, and sometimes those hours, um, shrink on the weekends.
Okay. And what are you going to be, you're going to be, what are you going to be selling there?
Yeah, I mean, it, it'll carry the traditional convenience store items, um, you know, candy, gum, cigarettes, beer, uh, lottery, so-
Okay.
And fuel.
All right. And then washer fluid, that sort of stuff?
Sure. Yes, all the-
Okay.
Standard elements.
Um, anybody on the board have any questions about this location? Anything?
No.
I'm just curious, do we need to do, deal with anything with, with signage in terms of approvals for that, since, I know there's nothing in here for signs, but will that, will that be a separate application?
We're proposing to meet code at this time.
So we'll need a sign permit?
Okay.
Yes.
And, and I'll ask this question on all three, so, or you can go ahead and answer for the other two as well, but any, any issues with the tanks or any work done on the tanks? I know there's a fence around there for quite some time, so can you tell us a little bit about that?
Um, there are no issues with the tanks or environmental. Everything will be up to code. And, and, um, the site that we're referring to right now, at 1617 Penfield Road, that is currently, um, still owned by Marathon Petroleum Company. They are still responsible for maintaining the tanks. I know that they continue to maintain them in a, um, you know, inactive state, but they're still required to meet all the annual testing with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. So all of that has been maintained through the process. The other two stations both operating and have been kept up to New York State Department of Environmental Conservation code, and we will continue to, you know, perform the annual or, um, you know, biannual testing that's required by the state. So, yeah, there is no plans for tank removal at any of the locations currently. Um, we've talked, and John briefly mentioned that, you know, we have a much bigger, uh, vision for 3290 and 3304 Atlantic Avenue. It's in the MUD. Um, that, what we're here for right now is purely a change of ownership and some, you know, reduction in, in use, bringing it closer to code. But we're going to be coming with a full, uh, presentation at some point when we look to, um, you know, basically perform a raise and rebuild.
Okay.
And, and all the tank information in that, at that time would be updated. So that would be a full, uh, tank removal, pump, canopy, everything would be removed, and it would be basically starting with a clean slate.
Okay. On this location?
On 3290, not 1617. Sorry, I know we're kind of grouping these all together.
No, and, and it's partly because, uh, we're putting them all together, but that's okay. All right. Um, nothing more from the board on-
So you don't own this one we're talking about, the old Hus station?
It is currently under contract. We are under contract, so, and that's why, as you can see in our, um, in our applications, it's currently just on behalf of PEM because I don't have a, I have not, um, closed on that property. I don't have a, um, shell company that owns the property like the other two. You'll see it 2175 Lakeville, or Penfield Road LLC. Eventually, that will be the case. There'll be two companies. PEM is our operating company, and then each property is owned by, um, an independent company.
Okay. So will, will there be, if things go well here, will there be a transfer of ownership of the tanks?
Um, the, well, the tanks will be owned by, are always owned by the operator anyhow.
Okay.
So they will stay under, they're PEM-owned.
All right. Good.
By the applicant.
Okay. So move in whatever direction you'd like to go on to the one other one.
We'll let Penfield one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marie, you have a question?
Yeah, it's okay. Um, was there, was there going to be any change in traffic pattern around there, or in any, in any of the sites?
Nope. At this time, no.
Okay. And any change in existing lighting? More lighting, less lighting?
Um, the answer to that would be no. Though, there will be, at 2175 Penfield Road, which is, was the former mobile, currently just rebranded to Marathon.
Right.
There is not, um, additional lighting, but we are changing the under canopy lighting. They had many that were out or, you know, damaged, and we're replacing light fixtures, but there's no additional, uh, lighting being proposed at this time.
Okay. So improvements or just repairing?
Correct.
Repairing, not adding anything?
And that would be true at any of these stations that had, you know, lights that were not functioning, uh, for the safety of our customers and employees and, um, you know, for liability purposes. We would be, uh, making repairs to those fixtures, but not adding or deleting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So we should go to 2175.
Yeah. So 2175 is the, the southeast corner of 250 and 441, uh, north and adjacent to Taco Bell. Again, that's, uh, that's a very small store. That's probably 600 square feet, 900. Uh, proposing no exterior improvements, other than replacing lights as Ken had said, um, the same sales as convenience store sales. I think that's really it. That's really it.
Yeah, that one was really a smooth transition. There was no, um, periods of, uh, loss of operation. So that was, uh, when we did purchase that station, it was the same day takeover, and, um, even right down to the employees haven't changed. So, just a different name, different operator.
Presumably the same design would be in the Hus station that-
Very similar to that. That, so that station is considered a kiosk style. It's not a full store. Uh, you know, there's a limited offering, but it's still usually the full array, just on a much, you know, instead of 40 gums, you have five, you know, and same thing with that, you know, every category of, of sales, it's just on a much smaller scale. And, and that store is very similar to the panorama store in terms of size and offerings.
Okay. All right. Atlantic, then?
So Atlantic, um, currently also, recently closed, um, in terms of operation. This is the one that, you know, has the greatest amount of change from its current use to what we're proposing at this time. Um, we are looking to reopen that station as a gas and convenience store only. We would be removing the, uh, car mechanic facility. We'd be moving the, I guess I'm told there was a fruit stand of some nature, although I never saw it. We would not be continuing that. We do, we also do not, uh, have any auto sales, um, as part of our business model, so that would be eliminated from the current- model, so that would be eliminated from the current operation as well. Outside of that, we would actually probably improve the scope of the business on the C-store side, which is increase the offerings from what they currently did not have, which included tobacco, cigarette, lottery, your other, you know, more consistent, traditional C-store offerings. So, we would be bringing those in. But again, that still falls under the same convenience store operation. They just didn't have them in their, you know, in their sales portfolio.
Okay, and any physical changes to the property? Do you anticipate that?
At, for this purpose, no.
Okay.
At this time, no.
All right. You keep saying that because you're hoping to come in in the future and...
Yes.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Mike.
The outdoor shed stuff is going to stay pretty much as is?
It is going to stay right now. You know, in, in meeting with the town planners, that is something that the shed company came and made and, you know, kind of went through this same process. They paid their fees. They got approvals. They've shown interest in remaining on site, and I personally don't see any need to remove them at this time. Doesn't seem, you know, it seems to be fairly organized and not detracting from the overall corner, which, again, we are well aware that is, you know, not the appearance, appearance that the M U D. is striving for, which, you know, it's kind of the excitement that we have moving into this area, acquiring the property next door. You know, we currently have the six and a half acres on that corner, so we feel that, you know, with the other development that's going to be, you know, starting in that area, that we can really bring that corner up to, you know, those standards in the, in the near future. But to short answer your question, we don't have any plans to ask the shed people to remove those at this time.
And they control how the look of that thing is?
They do, but again, that's, it would, it would be our property, so if there was ever an issue, I would have the, you know, the ability to reorganize.
So, if I missed this, what, what happens to the garage repair space? Is that all going to become convenience?
No, that'll just be closed.
Oh, okay.
Yep. It's actually already been emptied. There's no mechanic equipment in there.
You're not going to push in there with convenience?
Nope.
Okay.
No, it's actually not even really a heated or, you know, healthy environment, so just close it off for the time being.
Okay. Anything else from the board? All right, anybody in the audience care to speak about any of these applications? All right, thank you very much.
Bruce E. Howlett, Speed Delicious, one, one-one-one-two, East River Road, Avon, New York, one-four-four-one-four. Request a conditional use permit under section two fifty dash thirteen point three and section two fifty dash five point six dash C one A of the code to allow a sit-down restaurant with outdoor dining at nineteen ninety-eight Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by Empire Park Management LLC and is zoned limited business. S B L number zero-nine-three-point-zero-two-dash-one-dash-twelve-point-zero-zero-two, application number nineteen Z dash zero-zero-zero-six.
My name is Chelsea Lee, and I'm here on behalf of Bruce Howlett. He is the business owner, and we are the managing partners. This is my husband, Paulie. So, I'll tell you a little bit about Speedies, I guess. So, they originated in Binghamton, New York, which is where we grew up. That's how we're familiar with them. Italian immigrants brought them to the southern tier in the early twenties. They quickly became a favorite. Speedies are just a marinated meat that's cubed and traditionally skewered and then grilled up and served with bread. Very simple, but very delicious. Chicken has, over time, become the most popular and preferred meat of choice, and since being brought to the New York State Fair in nineteen seventy-six, they've become somewhat of a nostalgic food that invoke memories and family and fun. There continues to be a very popular speedy, fast, and balloon rally in Binghamton and has grown, grown quite large over the years. We're a bit different in the sense that our whole menu is focused on preparing Speedies, both traditionally and also exploring some creative ways to elevate this classic dish, and we're primarily here to discuss the addition of our wood-fired brick oven, which keeps our menu both authentic while also adding something special to the atmosphere and ambiance of Speed Delicious. So, we hope to create a welcoming place that people can experience great food made from scratch, and we hope to set ourselves apart from some of the other nearby restaurants by serving a less common product, but it's already been proven very widely popular in the southern tier region. So, we're looking forward to the opportunity to provide new, unique, and exciting food to the local community.
Okay, thank you for coming this evening. Could you tell me a little bit about the changes you're proposing to the interior or exterior, I think I even noticed?
Most are all just aesthetic, countertops, flooring, coat of paint, that, things like that. There, the original restaurant that was there is still owned by the same business owner, Benji's Pizza, so we're just stepping in as different managing partners with a new name, and the sign that was out front is exactly the same. The only thing that was different was the graphic inlay to it, so nothing on that sign has changed from what was originally approved there before. And in the interior, the major things, other than some minor changes of equipment, instead of a flat top, we put a grill in, we took out a couple fryers, you know, very minor changes, would be the addition to the brick oven. That's really the only major, major change on the interior.
Uh, could you tell me a little bit about your hours?
We're going to be open six days a week, as of right now, eleven A.M. to eight P.M.
And is this full service or sit down, uh, counter and then sit down?
It's quick casual, so we do have seating. We're doing a little more food that you would find in a sit-down restaurant, but in a quick casual environment.
And then you said there was going to be outdoor seating?
Yes, we do have a fenced-in area with a gazebo out there and grassed area. It's really quite nice, and we have very limited seating out there, but we do have room for a couple tables.
Is there going to be any music?
We're contemplating it. Nothing has been set in stone yet. We think that it could be a really fun place to have some entertainment in the summertime, as all the businesses around us close at five P.M. I don't see it interfering with anything, but that is something that we're looking to explore in the future.
Okay, and do you think you have ample parking?
Absolutely, yeah. We have a huge parking lot.
All right, that's all I had.
Anything else? What's the difference between a speedy and a shish kebab?
Shish kebabs are more Mediterranean, where speedy is, has more Italian influences.
Okay, but the same concept?
Very similar, yes. The flavor profiles are a little bit different.
All right. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? Okay, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Walsh, thirty-nine Salem Road, Rondecoyte, New York, one-four-six-two-two. Requests area variances to allow less slot width than required under section two fifty dash five point one dash F one of the code, and a storage building with less side setback than required under section two fifty dash five point one dash F twelve B of the code at nineteen fifty-three Harris Road. The properties now are formerly owned by Malcolm Traub and is zoned rural agricultural two, S B L number one-two-five-point-zero-four dash one dash two point five, application number nineteen Z dash zero-zero-zero-eight.
No, that's all right.
My name is Brandon Marks with Marks Engineering, representing Mr. Walsh. He is under contract to purchase this property, and his intent is to establish a single, single-family residence with a pole barn structure out back. As you discussed earlier with the size of the pole barn, and I was made aware of it earlier today, we've decided to make the pole barn forty-six wide by sixty long, and the width being east to west forty-six. It'll be still requesting the twenty-foot variance, or twenty-foot side setback from the south, southern line. Then it'll be forty-six barn, and then we'll have fifty-four on the north, to the north lot, so one variance for the south yard setback. The house size is, the footprint of the house is twenty, or, sorry, two thousand eight hundred and six. The new, the barn as forty-six wide by sixty long will be twenty-eight hundred square feet, so it will be less than the footprint of the house.
And Andy, on that point, as we talked about earlier in the work session, all the code requires is that it be less, not that it be half or thirty-three percent or seventy-five percent less.
It can't be larger than the house.
Okay, all right. And you've, you've, you will meet that barely, but you will meet that. Okay, all right, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so you said the new dimensions will be, you'll only need the variance for the south side?
Correct.
And you're still planning on staying with the twenty foot from the south side?
Correct.
Can you talk about how you determine that placement as opposed to centering it on the parcel, so you have equal?
So, we, we determined it for the, because of the driveway coming down to make it basically be directly accessible to the front of the barn. Also, the drainage to the north, the lot slopes from the southeast to the northwest, towards the farmer to the north. So, that, that's kind of the natural path of drainage. We do have some, so a pipe under the driveway to divert it, but it's still, it wants to go to the lowest point of the site to discharge.
Sure. When picking the placement for the barn, what kind of considerations were, were taken in terms of the neighboring parcels, in terms of, you know, a natural buffering? Because if you're looking for a variance to be closer, is there a natural buffering? Is it, is it a cleared-out area?
The, the site is actually, is actually overgrown brush. There is, there's no natural buffer between the, the southern neighbor and the new parcel. It's very consistent with a lot of those houses down through there, it's yard to yard, you know, building to building, so.
Okay. How tall would the barn be?
It would be less than the required code by, for the sheds. I think it's twenty feet, right?
Correct. Okay, so it'll be less than twenty foot?
Yep.
To the peak?
Yep.
Okay. Any types of illumination, things like that outside there?
Standard requirements by code, which I think is a light over the egress door. I imagine they probably would on a light, if there's, there's going to be an overhead door on the main end, so they'll have to, they'll want to have a light over that. So, probably two lights on the face of the building towards the east.
Okay, and so the egress door would be on the easterly side?
Yes.
Okay. And then would the appearance match the existing home? Is that the plan for the facade?
Pole barn style, metal barn, metal, metal siding, metal roofing. If you guys want to try to condition it, or if you guys want to condition, then it's got to be a wood product for the siding. I mean, I think he would probably go for that also.
Okay. Has anyone been in contact with the neighbor to the south to see if there's any issues with the variance?
Uh, we have not.
Okay. In terms of the shape, then we said we were going, it will be longer or deeper?
Right.
As opposed to what was, what was presented?
Yeah, sixty-foot run in the east-west direction.
Okay.
That's all I have at the moment.
So, originally, there was a question about the lot width and whether a variance was needed there, but...
So, we went into it just covering all bases, right? It's, it's a non-conforming lot and width, because it doesn't meet the hundred and fifty foot, right, required lot width. So, in order to just cover that if a variance is required, we're submitting, we're requesting it. Since it's pre-existing, non-conforming, and yet the town has deemed it as a buildable lot already, then we will not have to get that variance.
Okay, and how, how deep is, is the lot? Do you know?
It's, I think it's actually... Approximately nineteen hundred feet.
Okay, so it's a very deep lot, and it's a flag lot, and the, is there any contemplated use at this point for the, let's say, the flag portion of the lot?
No.
All right. And I suppose you could build a structure back there and probably bring it into setback, but you'd have to go nineteen hundred feet to get to it, or whatever the distance.
Yes, it's not feasible.
Yeah, okay. What, what is the intended use, and if you got into this already, I apologize, but the intended use of the structure, the accessory?
The, the homeowner has told me that it's going to be for personal products, vehicles, tools, general workshop for himself, not for commercial use.
All right. What I'm trying to get at is, because the lot, as, and you correctly pointed it out, is pre-existing and approved, what size accessory structure could you put there without needing a setback?
So, a hundred and twenty feet in width, I mean, you can have anything less than three hundred square foot with a ten-foot yard setback. Any, if you go over that, you're required to have fifty-foot side setbacks, so that would leave us with twenty feet left and a hundred and twenty feet. So, it'd be twenty by the length, would you be nineteen hundred or so, you know, but that's not, that's not what we're asking for. Twenty feet would be the minimum width, maximum width to comply with code.
Okay. Anything? Any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Come on up.
My name is Mark Wieland. I work, I live at nineteen fifty-seven Harris Road, also referred to as the southern neighbor. That's my border. My opinion is that the zoning laws in this area make the optics and the feeling of it rural, agricultural, if you will. And so also, that's what gets people who want that to come and try to invest or live in this area. And, you know, violating these, not violating, but having an exceptions to these zoning rules kind of hurts that, and especially, in this case, me, because it's reducing the, you know, the feeling or the, or the look of the width of my property in particular. And so, therefore, I think it might have an effect on my property value.
Okay, so your lot is similar in the sense it's long and narrow, if you will, and...
Mine is a little bit wider.
Yeah.
But the same length.
Okay.
Can you show us where you are there on this, on the map that's...
Sure.
Sure.
You're right below it.
So, this is it, I'm right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mine is very straight. I don't have the, the white part, so mine's only four point eight acres, I think, and this is nine point something.
Where's the back lot line then for you?
It's the ditch, the commission ditch is the...
Okay, so it goes all the way to the end of that?
Yeah. Now, none of this is in use back here. It's the farmer right here cups the hay.
You need to use the mic. They just told us, so, yeah.
The, the land in the, you know, further in the back is not in use for anything other than the farmer, two doors down, cups the hay for me and my neighbor back there, so.
All right, so I'm looking at an aerial map of the property, which is a subject of the application, and yours too, and I, and I think I'm seeing your home, and then what else do you have there? You got, is there a pool there and a deck?
There's a pool, yeah.
Okay.
And there's a hot tub with a little roof on top of it.
Okay, do you have, I, I don't see a shed or...
You have a little shed, a very small, there's a very, if you go to the edge of the house and go straight back, there's a shed right there.
Okay. And do you know the size of that approximately?
It's tiny. It's, um...
Eight by ten or something like that?
Something like that, yeah, maybe ten, ten by ten.
All right. You know, one of the, one of the comments that you made was about the rural nature of this area, and I, you know, I think everyone would agree with that. So, would you, let's assume there was not a need for a setback variance here. Would you, let's just say philosophically, would you think that a structure like that is out of place for a rural area like this?
Um, no.
Okay.
And...
So the reason is, is because... It's a setback that's the issue, being that close to the property.
There are, there are other properties along Harris that have buildings very similar to that. Some of them have just gone up, some of them have been there a while. They're placed way out of the way. There, there's a lot of difference, or a lot of space between everything. And part of the reason is because of the zoning rules for this area. So yes, my primary, my, my issue is with the setback variance.
And I wouldn't expect you to know this, but maybe you do. Do any of those buildings have a variance?
Oh, I have absolutely no idea.
No, okay. So is there any amount of buffering that would alleviate your concern if we were to say, in other words, you need to do this in between the building? And I forget your name, I'm sorry.
Mark.
And, and Mark's property, you know, pine trees, effervities, anything like that that would ease your concern?
I mean, my concern is the way that it looks and how that reflects on property value.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if it was a certain setback and there was some buffer, and when you looked at it, which is, you know, it's difficult to tell before it's built, but if you looked at it, it did not seem to like shrink the, the perceived width of my property, then, you know, I'd be fine with it.
Okay.
But, so the only thing I have to go with right now is the existing zoning rules, because they seem to be working, you know? The area seems to look pretty good the way it is.
There are reasons to have rules, you're correct in saying that, so, okay. But you certainly would be open to considering if somebody were to put a buffering plan in front of you for you to look at, you'd be, you'd be willing to consider it, I guess, if that's fair to say. But maybe it's not.
Yeah, or if the building was way further back.
Yeah, further back west, is it? West direction, yeah. Okay.
I have a question for you. If the building was narrower and didn't require setbacks, what would you, be your opinion? So they would come in and build a building that was twenty-foot wide, north to south, and then, let's say, you know, sixty, seventy feet deep, and that met all, all code requirements, would that be better? Or would that be worse?
Okay, my opinion is that I'm not happy about the pole barn at all, but that's just my opinion, and it's not my land, so person, my personal opinion is I really have no, no voice about, you know, what goes on in that land. But, no, I, I mean, I, I'm not in favor of the pole barn, that's for sure, if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm just, you know, in terms of, if it was, in a sense, thirty feet farther from the property line, that where, than where it's proposed right now, being twenty-foot away, if it was a full fifty-foot or farther than what's proposed, in theory, they could, that, that would be allowed, but would the structure visually be much different to you as, as a southerly neighbor looking up at it?
Right, I mean, it would be better.
A longer, much longer rectangular building, you think would look better than...
Well, again, my primary concern is the perceived width and space on my property.
Sure.
So if it was longer, like if it was narrower and longer, if it was further back, or, you know, whatever, then that, it would be better.
Okay.
In my opinion.
How much wider is your lot than, at this point, than, than this one?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think his is, or that one is a hundred-and-seventy-five, and mine's two...
I think it is like one-twenty.
I think this is one-twenty, and yours, this is less than yours, for sure.
It's, yeah, it's less than mine.
You can see that.
Yes, quite a bit less than mine.
Yeah. You don't believe you have any variances on your property?
No.
Okay.
Not that I know of.
Right. Anything else from the board?
I guess I'd like the applicant to come back up, I have a couple more questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Considering your first plan that you submitted, which was twenty-foot from the south and thirty-seven-point-four feet, if, if the new plan is to take twenty feet off of that, why not go farther north with that twenty-foot, where it was originally proposed to be thirty-seven-point-four and it still met your drainage requirements in terms of the placement, things like that? The only difference would be more gravel for the driveway.
So I, I guess the applicant would be open to moving the barn north. We would have to get a northern setback, right? It would be just basically flipping the setback to the north line, or right, you're saying, roughly? And if, if that's a request of the neighbors to provide more of a buffer, we can make it work, I guess is what I'm saying. We can make the drainage work, we pipe things all the time, right? To provide more of a buffer. If there's a certain distance the neighbors would like to see for the barn, I'm sure we could come up with that, say, a couple hundred feet from his house. That might be a pops possibility within reason.
Is that something you would prefer to have at table to discuss with the applicant, to say, how much farther back? Could, could you go to the, to the west?
He's, I've already spoken with him about it. This is the ideal situation right here, that's why we presented it. He's also, he's, he needs the building, but he says the location is a little flexible.
And, and by the way, he's gonna live here? That's his plan?
This is his primary residence, yes.
So I, the ideal situation is to move in a nice, beautiful new home and have a good relationship with your neighbors as well, as much as you can.
Right.
So I think Andres has a good idea about tabling it to give everybody the opportunity to maybe talk a little bit here and see what we, we can come up with. If we can't satisfy everybody, we'll, we'll do what we, what we have to do as a board as well, but, okay.
Let me...
Maybe talk with nineteen-thirty-one, too, to make sure that they don't have any issues with what is being proposed.
Nineteen-thirty-one on the other side, on the north, yeah.
Yeah, well, we may hear that tonight, too. But, okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, go ahead.
Well, one more quick question. You had said that there was no commercial use for this pole barn. Would you, would the applicant be okay with a condition on the resolution stating that?
Yes.
Okay.
The, one thing I'd ask of the board is if we can switch the variance, he's in a little bit of a hurry to get the purchase of the property, because he has a contract that will expire.
Yeah.
If we could, say, move the variance to the northern line, twenty-foot, twenty-foot setback from the northern line, no setback requirement on the southern line, and stipulate any screening that may be required.
And you also discussed, could you go farther north or farther west?
Yeah, within reason.
In a sense farther from the home, but, and since this isn't, it's not called out here, I don't, I don't believe the distance from the home right now, so it's difficult to say how far is too far, just based on this application. So if you had a little more detail in terms of that, then we could stipulate that.
Okay. So if you're working back off the road, it's the, the new house to the new barn is a hundred feet. The new house is in line with the neighboring house with a similar depth, so if you were to measure kitty corner, it's approximately a hundred feet. Like I said, within reason, say a hundred-and-fifty feet would be realistic.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay. All right. Very good.
Do you have any more questions or about conditions, or do you want? I guess I'm trying to understand, should I just table it, because you guys can't make a decision?
Well...
No, I mean, we can make a decision really easy, we just wanna make a decision that is favorable for you.
I wanna see it go in the right direction.
Yeah, and we appreciate the need to move it along, especially when there's a real estate contract involved, but I think it would be wise for you and your client to take the opportunity of a month and, and especially if that's not gonna kill the deal, and, and have a conversation about what we can do here.
Okay, I guess I'd request to table it.
Yeah.
See another month behind it, just so we can move things around a little bit.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that it? All right, that was the last public hearing scheduled, so we'll stand adjourned, and we'll take a brief recess, five minutes, everybody okay with that? And reconvene in the back. Thank you all very much. Is that what you guys are? Come on up here to the podium. Everybody else can start your break. Why don't you tell us why you were here and what, if anything, you learned?
Um, okay, so we are...
Your name?
Um, I'm Noah Prey.
I'm Joe Thompson.
We are, we are in Troop 363 out of Webster. We're actually here because two of our merit badges require a, attending a public meeting and taking notes, so we've been taking notes on the different discussions that were taking place.
Okay. You want anything to add to that? So, so you're, you say out of Webster?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, they have a zoning board, too, but this one is a lot better.
Must not be as good.
Lot better. Okay. Okay, well, good, good luck to you, and it's nice to see you, and I'm glad I caught you before you left.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck, guys. All right, folks, go ahead, you can, you can have your break now, we'll be back there in about five minutes. Thank you. Okay. I think we are all set to reconvene here on the deliberations, so who do we have?
Number one.
Okay. Number one, I'm gonna move that this is type-two action under seeker. No further action required.
All right, I will second that. So we have a motion under seeker to declare it a type-two action, and that's made by Mike. Dan has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. As to the motion itself, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. I don't think there's an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. It's kind of a, I'm a mixed bag there anyways, so I'm not sure if there's an overriding character in the neighborhood. There's a lot of different uses, a lot of different styles of houses. I did see one other situation, I don't remember, it was down the road, it was sort of similar, was an outbuilding that had some wood next to it. Obviously, he could, the benefit could be achieved by another method, and that would be to expand the garage, but that's, doesn't sound like it's feasible due to the cost. The requested area variance is substantial, it's, I think, about forty percent, but I don't think there's enough to offset the benefit. It doesn't have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Definitely, it's definitely self-created. I think the other thing is that shed itself is pretty visible. It's visible from the road that intersects. It's, it's towards the front of the property, which is, at least from the street, looks pretty narrow, depth-wise. But I think if it's moved closer to the house, it'll probably have less impact, and it's, and it's gonna be the same color as the house, so I think it would be an improvement over what's there now.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the variance as requested. Do we get a second?
I'll second.
Andres. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number two.
Okay, for seeker, I'm gonna move that this is an unlisted action, and that we issue a negative declaration.
Second, further adverse effects.
All right, so Mike has made a motion under seeker to declare it an unlisted action, and to further conclude that there are no significant environmental impacts, and Andres has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
With regard to the motion itself, this is a close call, at least in my mind. If you look at the standards, I think the proposed signs are really not in harmony with the standard for permitted signs within the spirit of the article. It's four times as big, and there's reasons why that may be offset by the fact that you can put a number of businesses on one sign, large though it may be, and, and eliminate a number of smaller signs in the same area. And that's really what the board in ninety-one said, that, that was the reason they approved it, a reason which no longer is, is the case. The proposed sign is compatible and not detrimental to the neighborhood properties. It's been there since, since ninety-one, and it doesn't, by reason of its location, create a hazard or interfere with the lawful and aesthetic enjoyment of the public lot, highway, or neighboring good properties. But I think the big thing is where applicable the proposed sign is necessary to adequately identify the business. I think that's where this application fails. It's clearly not necessary to adequately identify the business. There's a number of different businesses there, none of which even want to be on the sign, so obviously, they don't need to adequately identify their business. And this is a church in a strip plaza, in a relatively, you know, small business area. It's pretty easy to identify, I think. And, you know, if, if churches needed that much identification, we'd have a number of applications for a lot bigger signs than we have, so for those reasons, I would move to not, to disapprove.
I'll jump in, and I don't, I don't think this application is close. The only thing that's giving me pause at all is that, you know, this conversation and a misunderstanding about what they could do. If they were coming in here now to ask to do what they've already done, as I said, I don't think it's close, and, and I understand...
I think that's a good point.
Well, and I understand they've spent six thousand dollars, I get that, and that's not an insignificant amount of money, but it's clear to me, the ninety-one resolution, the board contemplated many tenants being on a sign that large. There's only one, and it's, I don't think it meets the criteria, certainly not the need for identification. It's a church, a church is something that, for the most part, people go to regularly, so you're not looking, there's not a lot of people looking for it. So they're entitled to a sign of a certain size, but it's just too big, in my opinion. So for that, for that reason, I'll second your motion.
I'm concerned about the precedent we would be setting by approving this, and I agree with the interpretation of the ninety-one resolution. I am also concerned that future tenants wouldn't have an option to be put on the sign. You know, right now it's fine, but you always have to think ahead, so I am supportive of the denial.
Any other comments?
I think, I agree with what's been said.
I think it's a good point, that none of the other tenants want to be on the sign, as far as driving business and identifying what's there.
So I guess that would lead to the conclusion that a sign that large is not needed today as it may have been in ninety-one, so, okay. All right, so we have a motion to deny and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed to that? No? Okay. The gas station is gone, so let's go to...
Speedy Licious?
Yes, number six.
I'm going to make a motion that this is an unlisted action, not having any negative impact on the environment, and requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay, so on seeker, we have a motion to declare it unlisted, and also to declare no adverse impact.
Adverse impact.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for Speedy Licious. I do think that the concept of a restaurant is, of course, in harmony with the plaza and where it's located. After going through all the changes they're making and looking at all the adequacy of the parking facilities, there's nothing that's detrimental to their plan. They, the only thing I would say is to just be considerate of noise ordinances if you have music, because you will need to follow those. I don't think this is detrimental to the area, and I think will be a great improvement, so I, for those reasons, would approve.
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Marie to approve the request, and a second by Andres. Any conditions or anything, if you sent something?
Well, I think we just need, if they do have loud music, that they need to be, follow the ordinances for playing music outside.
Yes. It's nice that the loca- It's nice that the location doesn't have any tenants that operate at night, too.
Can I ask any specific limits on the outdoor seating? I didn't really get a plan.
How many were there?
I think the applicant's set two tables before.
There were only two or three tables, I thought.
So, six people? Two, six.
Could you tell, what is your...
There's currently three tables, and each has seating for four.
Okay.
And you would like that to continue?
Yes.
All right, so, condition on the use permit, no more than three to four tables outside.
Perfect, thank you.
Is everyone okay with that?
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded the Seeker?
Sure, I did, somebody did.
All of us did.
Mike or...
I think Mike did the Seeker, I think I did her motion, then.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
All right, number seven.
I'm going to make a motion to table this application, and...
How about Seeker?
We can do Seeker if you like.
Smooth that.
Let's see, this is a type-two action pursuant to Seeker, with no further review.
Second.
Okay, a Seeker motion by Andres to declare it a type-two action, seconded by Mike. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I will make a motion to table this application, so we can wait some further details in terms of the exact distance from the primary dwelling to the accessory structure, how far to the west it will be. I think currently it was said it would be 100 feet, but we'd like to, but they could move farther, but I think we'd like to get that a little more in detail, and also the exact setback for the sides, if we're going to go nothing to the south, and, or no variance occurred on the south, how much to the north, to finally get that in detail from the applicant.
If they change it, it doesn't affect a rear setback, right?
No, I think you'd have to go 1,900-some feet to be...
All right, I just wanted to make sure, because the notice doesn't say anything about that, so, okay.
I'll second that move to table.
Okay, so we have a motion to table by Andres for the reasons stated, and a second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, you know, I certainly would, if you hear anything, encourage them to sit down and talk with a neighbor as well, you know, it'd be helpful, because I'm not sure how far north they're going to be able to go, so. Okay, we can go back to the gas station, let's start with the first one listed, which is Panorama. They're all unlisted. Yeah. So, for Panorama, I will make a motion under Seeker to declare this an unlisted action, and further to issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'm going to make a motion on the merits to approve this. While it hasn't been operated as a gas station and a small convenience store for quite some time, it was for a long time as well, and it's a good spot for that. No issues with the tanks, when they close, I imagine they'll take ownership of the tanks as well, and this appears to be a good reputable firm. I'm not sure where the one in Webster is. Is it near the village? Does anybody know?
I don't either.
Okay.
Just to the west.
Sure, let's go.
Okay, so, again, for the purposes as stated by the applicant tonight, and in the written application, I'd make a motion to approve.
I think the community will be very happy to see this.
See something going up.
Yes.
For the hours.
Andrew's second.
Did she? I didn't hear, okay, no.
I don't care.
I think it's always good to step down.
Yeah.
It's a hazard of being...
All right, the next is, let's see...
By the way, it's on Holt Road by North Farnsworth.
They didn't vote.
The whole road?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It used to be a Hess or something, I think. That's right, you can see it by 104.
Oh, it's down. That wasn't old, was it?
All right, so there's a motion to approve that, the merits prove the application, and did we get a second?
Yes.
We argued over the second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
2175, Penfield Road. Again, same sort of thing, this is, I don't think it ever ceased operating as a gas station, if memory serves me correctly. Been there forever, people expect it, no one's seen it, it's also a smaller-sized convenience store, so, given the fact that there's going to be only some cosmetic upgrades and repairs in the lights, et cetera, that the applicant said, well, first, I would make a Seeker motion to declare it unlisted, I can feel you guys, and declare a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All right, so we have, I've made a motion under Seeker to declare it an unlisted action, and to issue a negative dec, Andres seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm not going to repeat myself, but, yes, so I'd, for the reasons previously stated, I would make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The third one is a little bit different.
The one under Seeker?
But under Seeker, it is also, I'd make a motion to declare it an unlisted action, and to issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any further discussion on Seeker? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, let's see what, just, for instance, it's different in the sense that we actually are going to approve this as a continuation of a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Yes.
Because zoning has changed, I guess.
Right.
All right, so that's the first point to make, that's more of a technicality. The second thing is, there's a number of current uses that the applicant is going to cease, and that is the auto repair and the sale of vehicles. Is that everybody's understanding?
And the fruit stand, I believe.
And the fruit stand, good point. So, we'll make that a condition, I would move to make that a condition of approval, that those uses cease.
The sheds.
And we will keep the sheds.
Yes, we're going to continue to do the sheds and the outdoor furniture, and I'm fine with that.
You want to differentiate, I don't think the fruit stand is a pre-existing non-conforming.
It's gone.
But he's gone anyways. Yeah, he's going to take it out. So, I don't know, is the sale of the sheds and the furniture a pre-existing non-conforming, or is that allowed?
Those, they came in front of us.
Right.
Okay.
They did, recently.
Okay, so in any event, I'm okay with all of that, so a motion would be to approve it as a continuation of a pre-existing non-conforming use with the sale of the sheds and the furniture. Everything else discontinued.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's it. Any further business? No.
Just your business plans?
I just saw that in the...
Just change it up.
I'll change it up and save it.
Okay, well, good job tonight, 8:35, and good month. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Max.
See you.